The amended notice of called meeting. Original notice was given on June 13th, 2019 to Commissioners Mary Lawson Brown, Rufus Borum, Justin Campbell, and Tammy McCaskill. You're hereby notified that a special call meeting of the City Commission is called to be held at the regular meeting place of the City Commission at City Hall 201 North Second Street, the city of Palacka, to begin at 5:00 PM on Tuesday, June 18th, 2019. The purpose of the meeting is to consider adoption of a resolution authorizing execution of an FDOT PGTA for land acquisition for a new airport entrance project, so ready project. Number two, discuss City Manager's search recruitment with Mercer Group rep. And number three is consider applicants for interim City Manager. Please govern yourselves accordingly. Go call please.
Mayor Hill.
Here.
Mary. Vice Mayor Brown. Commissioner Borum.
Present.
Commissioner Campbell.
Present.
Commissioner McCaskill.
I'm Mr. President, have a fore. Thank you very much. Uh, moving forward, we'll ask Vice Mayor if she will lead us in the application of the plan. We're going to please stand in the house.
Do you have any thoughts of guide us, lead us, help us to make the best possible decision for as many people as we can, as long as we can. Guide us and strengthen us and help us to be good citizens and lead our city to the place it needs to be. Help all who join us today. In Jesus' name, amen.
I believe in this to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Moving the agenda to item number one. Public comment. Public comments will be limited to three minutes. No action will be taken on topics of discussion. If you're here for public comment, please fill out a yellow speaker's card in the back of the room so that your information will be noted for the record. Is there anyone here for public comment? Seeing no one, we'll close public comment. Moving on to item number two of the agenda, Resolution R 68, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute and attest FDOT public transportation grant agreement, FIN number 4367779401, for new airport entrance land acquisition at Palacka Municipal Airport in the amount of $300,000, 100% grant-ready funding.
A resolution of the city of Palacka, Florida, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute and attest a public transportation grant agreement with the Florida Department of Transportation for the new airport entrance land acquisition at Palacka Municipal Airport, Taylor Kinfield. Salute.
Second. It's a motion on the floor with Vice Mayor Brown. Second, my Commissioner Campbell. Is there any further discussion?
Of course.
Questions called by Commissioner Borum. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to item number three, is our City Manager Executive Search Recruitment. Dana Higginbotham of the Mercer Group is here. Senior Vice President, Ms. Higginbotham, would you come forward at this time?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. Commissioners, thank you for having me this evening. For the record, my name is Donna Higginbotham and I am with the Mercer Group.
Welcome.
I have been a recruiter for nearly 20 years in another field, but recruiting is recruiting. And nearly two years ago, I joined my husband in his recruitment. I had been assisting him since 2010 when he joined the Mercer Group. Sadly, my husband passed away two months ago. His desire was that I continue his work with the Mercer Group. And Mr. Mercer just promoted me to Senior Vice President.
Congratulations.
I will do the firm proud as I will do the city of Palacka proud. I am at your disposal. I just live around the corner in Daytona Beach, shorts. The Mercer Group has been in business for nearly 30 years now. And we have offices in 13 states. So it's not just me doing this. I will call on all of the consultants all over the United States so that we can get the best City Manager possible for Palacka. Each city has their own challenges. In the very near future, I wish to meet with each one of you and we can do this various ways. We can do this by phone. I will be most happy to come here and meet with you one-on-one. Or we can have a workshop where we sit down and we go over what you want to see in your next City Manager. I did send, um, I believe it was about a three-page
They have it in there.
Proposal of attributes. And these are just things that you can be thinking about, what you want to consider in your next City Manager. Benefits, education, salary, and we'll go over those when we talk. We have a seven-step approach. And that first approach is the position analysis. After we have our discussions, then I will come up with a job description. I won't put anything in print until you approve it. You have the final say in everything. No brochures will be printed, no job postings. We'll go on any advertising sites that we have without your approval first. We will run about a 30-day recruitment. And we know that that last week is really, really busy. Um, people prefer to go through a recruiting firm because anything that they may send to you for a job, should you have decided to do this on your own, becomes public record. And there are those that do not wish their names to be known publicly because it may jeopardize a career that they have right now, understood. So we're going to advertise in, in many, many different places all over the United States and internationally. Um, in one of our most recent recruitments, we had a resume from Germany and one from the Netherlands. Goodness. We will constantly be reviewing those resumes according to what your specifications are. And in the end, then we will be making one-on-one phone calls to those that meet the minimum qualifications. You, if you choose, I will give you a thumb drive with every resume on it. Because at the end, if you want to look over all of the resumes and if there's someone you wish to call in and add to the list of semifinalists that we present, you have that option of doing that. We are going to screen them as much as we can without their written approval. We will do internet research, social media research. There are things that we can't give you. But you will get an email from me with all of the links to any articles that we find about each individual. And we can do that without the written approval. Once you decide on who you want to interview as semifinalist, then we will ask for their permission. And we contract with a firm in Walnut Creek, California, Advanced Research Systems. And they do credit checks, driver's license, criminal checks. And you will have possibly about a 14-page background check on each individual that you will be interviewing. You go through the interview process. And we'll schedule day-long events. Typically, we have two or three days where we open it up for a community meet and greet so the citizens can meet the potential candidates and then do the interviews. You can schedule another special meeting for the evening of your interviews if you feel you are in a position to make your decision at that time. And we're always here for the negotiation and the follow-up. If you choose any help with the contract negotiations, we're here for you. Do you have any questions for me? That's it in a nutshell.
Any questions?
Well, it doesn't seem like it's World Cup from A to Z.
I just want to tell you, we have an airport, so if those foreign people want to fly in, they can buy in.
We get them from all over.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Move to our next item.
Can I ask one question?
Sure.
When does the process start? Ma'am, excuse me, when does the process start?
As soon as we meet. My calendar is right here. We can set a date.
What, as soon as you meet one-on-one with the Commissioners?
Okay.
Right.
I'm ready.
It sounds like you.
And I know you're ready.
Thank you. You can get a few minutes, I'm sure we can accommodate.
I think everybody here is off on Friday, right?
Yeah.
Everybody here is off on Friday?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, I was fishing Friday.
Everybody here is not off on Friday.
Whoa, sorry. What's your, um...
I mean, it's out of consideration, I think, that
A majority of us.
The majority, if we can meet, I mean, not if everyone can, but if there's enough for us, I wouldn't want to make it back for a trip, but if there's two or three of us that can be on one day, would you prefer it that way, or?
That would be preferable, but if you can't, you can't. We can do this by phone. I'll come here. However you choose, what's your pleasure?
Like she said, Friday really kind of works.
Are you available Friday?
And I think it's to be able to workshop your man.
She's available Friday.
We can maybe sign up one hour.
She can tell you on the phone.
You will.
You want face and face.
I, I can be here Friday.
What we'll do is
I'll sacrifice.
How about we just coordinate the time soon with Ms. Robinson when this is over?
Okay.
And get everything set up for Friday.
Yes, I'll make that sacrifice.
How much time?
Forty-five minutes if these. For you, that means an hour and a half. Don't let her hear what I'm doing.
Just say you're laughing.
Alright, so we're gonna, so we're gonna coordinate it with Ms. Robinson and get all the times in place for Friday to get as many people as we can so that we don't kind of delay the hour that we're here for now. Moving on to item number four, the agenda, which is our interim City Manager, applicant interviews. We have our three applicants for the position of being interim City Manager. Gentlemen, if you're, you're mixed around the room, I see everyone, but Miss Drago, can you, can you, can I have each one of you come forward and introduce yourself just for the record?
I'm Brian Bergen. I live at 611 Industry in Palacka, Florida.
Good afternoon, my name is John Drago.
Good afternoon.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Elman Lee Garner of Chatham, Florida.
Good evening.
So what we're gonna do as we continue with this process and go through the, the interview process, since we have three of you, we will ask the other two applicants to, to leave the room as we conduct the interviews.
And we're conducting them today?
Yeah, that's the plan. That's the plan. So, um, so what we're gonna do is, um, we will, what we'll do is we'll take a quick five-minute recess so that we can coordinate with Ms. Higginbotham. And then we will start the interviews. Up first will be Mr. Drago, then followed by Mr. Garner, and then last will be Mr. Bergen. Who, who wants to go last? So Drago wants to go last, so he's not worried about the ride home.
I'm sorry. Can you come to the back?
So, we'll go ahead and let Mr. Garner go first then. And we, what was it, we'll take a five-minute break and then we'll call you and we'll go from there. So we'll stand in recess for five minutes. Is Elman Lee Garner, Mr. Garner, if you can come forward, what we're gonna do initially is we're gonna ask you to go ahead and give us a brief, one-minute introduction of yourself and, uh, within that, give a brief introduction, we'll leave, we'll limit it to two minutes and, and give us some of the highlights of your career along the way.
Alright, um, again, Elman Lee Garner, go by name and lead. And I've been in City Management business since March of 84. First time in Wada, Wada, Georgia. Retired rearm in 1976 and went back to Skidmore, got the Masters of Public Administration. And I've been several cities, I've been in Georgia for 14 years, a few cities, and then I've been in Chattahoochee since 23rd of June, 1997. And I, I had hoped to work until 23rd of June this year, completing 22 full years, but changing council last September, they saw fit to, uh, that's good, retired, so I did and then worked out fine. But when, what got me really interested in Palacka was I was down at City County Managers' meeting, I'm, I'm a lifetime member of the City County Managers Association. I was down at City County Managers Conference in Orlando about a month ago, and some of my old friends said, hey, Palacka's looking for an interim manager. And they knew that I had made some comments earlier that I wouldn't mind taking an interim job somewhere, uh, because I've got 30, 30, nearly, nearly 35 full years as City Manager with Georgia here. I've been involved in cities with electric, natural gas, I'm familiar with some, what was your Palacka Gas Authority? I don't know how many every year, well, my Larry Hesputts, they used to be, he, he schooled me in natural gas, uh, years and years ago. And I was in Camulla, Georgia, and in Chattahoochee, we distributed natural gas and we distributed electricity. So I'm familiar with that. And all the other things that were in there, recreation and solid waste, order, budget, and you name it, I've been, everything that you had on your interim, uh, solicitation there, I've got experience and I think I outlined some of them in my resume. But I, I, I'm a people person. If I ever met a stranger, I don't know who it was. And I get along and I've always had this philosophy, if you can't work for me, you can't work for anybody. That's, that's, that's the way I feel. And a lot of people say, well, because I'm retired army, that I may be a, you know, ground pound or something, I'm not. I like participative, uh, working and working on a participative, uh, way of, of management. I'm not the, you, you real hard-drive manager that some people are. I like people, let people, and I, I believe in, in promoting from within, every way you can and get some employees that you have, dedicated, I believe, as much as possible. Always trying to find a way to, from a citizen complaint or whoever, I want to find a way to say yes. I always try to find a way and, and go through that process three or four times before I say no. That's, that's the way I feel, I am. And I, I work well with, well, people. I, I know I'm a two-minute smidgen, but your website was down, so I couldn't get all the information, but I must thank Mr. Driggers and Ms. Robinson for some information they sent to me. And I was able to sit in this afternoon in your, in your pension review for general employees and I commend somebody who's done a great job here in, in Palacka over the year with, with your finance and, and the way that the city is run. I, I really am impressed with, with what I've been able to find out and, and I would really enjoy being your, your interim City Manager, whether it's a month or six months or whatever it might be.
One of the things we're, we find ourselves in, in the budgeting process right now. It's currently in that time of the year. What's your approach to budgeting and how do you sustain?
Well, I, I have always done the budgets to, I've never, I've never worked in a place where I've had a, a full-time finance director. It's always been the city clerk plus city manager doing, doing, doing that plus a little bit of assistance from the, with the authority. I like to pursue the process you've got here. I've looked at it, uh, and, uh, I believe in saving money where you can, but I also have a philosophy, if I'm sending some employees out to do a job, I will ensure that they've got the materials, correct materials, equipment, vehicles to do the job.
Well, one of the things, Palacka's a unique place, and we, well, we think we're unique in a lot of ways, as it relates to some of the community outreach aspects going on right now. And really the, the vast amount of organizations within the community and its rich history. What's been your approach to community outreach and what methods do you find to be the most effective?
Well, I have been, uh, involved with the Chamber of Commerce, uh, every place I've been. I was Chairman for five years of the Gadsden County Economic Development Council. I'm very involved in, in church activities, Boys and Girls Club, those are youth is our future, and I believe in doing everything we can to make sure our youth come to have a, have a fundamental way of learning how to do things and, and being good, good citizens for the, for the future.
Any questions from the Commission?
We have a very diverse staff. And as you see, there's two ladies up here and then we've got them there. I always like to ask how you feel about working with us, us females. In the past, sometimes some of the, the people that've been City Managers felt more comfortable conversing with the, the male part of us and not the female part of us.
Employees are an employee. Colors, I have no, have no, have no colors. Everybody is the same. I hope everybody does a good job, a good day's work with a good day's pay. I don't care who it is, red, green, black, blue, or white, you know, so, but I, I, I think I can work with the verse. I, I've done it all, all through. I was in Stone Mountain, Georgia, I'm in Camulla, Georgia, Hable, Georgia, and, and we had a fair, very diverse. But one thing I, one thing I do want to say, not in a condition, condition of that, the pension here, now, I will, when I found out, I'm familiar with the eighth section of chapter 85, chapter 75, fire and police, because we had that, we had that in, in Chattahoochee. And the rest of ours, FRS, and I've heard some of the comments that go back and, and I would like to, if I get the job, I'd, I'd like to be involved in, in some discussions on some of the recommendations that you'll talk about tonight. But, uh, I, I don't, I don't see color, I don't see male, female, pay, an employee, a person's a person.
One more question. What would you like to know about us? About this town and about?
Well, I've done, I've done a little study on you and of course I've known you, uh,
112 years.
Twenty, 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 twenty-one to be exact. And of course, uh, uh, I worked on committees with Commissioner Norwood, who was here, and I think you, you took, you replaced him, I think.
Yes.
Okay. And so I've, I've kept Palacka because every faringly city meeting I've been to, I think Ms. Mary's, she hasn't been, been there. And we've become friends over the years and, and, and I'm not showing that, saying that just to get a vote or something, but I really, I think you've got a diverse group here and, and I think I could work with you every one, one-on-one, be no problem. I don't believe in keeping secrets. I like to keep the council notified and advise of what's going on, either good or bad. And I know I can, I have a police background. I was chief of police also as City Manager.
At the same time, right?
At Stone Mountain. And you think, you think that wasn't something? This was in Stone Mountain. And the woman, former mayor was the Grand Dragon of KKK. And he had given 40 acres of land behind Stone Mountain to the KKK for their conclaves. And we had our Martin Luther King, uh, uh, parade to show forth with Mr. Coretta King on one side and their daughter going the other side and all the people coming back and forth. And, and them in, them in the background, the filthy of Georgia, Georgia GBI, police, they're really, they're always giving things for it. But that was a, a situation that, uh, it was gonna be, it was gonna be for just a few, few days, you know, it wound up in 18 months. City Manager, Chief of Police.
So, let me ask a question, a couple questions about technology. So we, we just entered into a new technology contract, we're doing a lot of it, technology infrastructure upgrade. What's been your approach to the newer technologies?
Well, I said at one time I'd never have a cell phone, but I changed my mind a couple of years ago and, and, uh, at Chattahoochee, we've just gone through a complete upgrade of technology from utility building, water source, gas, electric, fire feeds, flood, flood feeds, uh, whole nine yards. And it's been, within the last three years, we've gone through that whole setup and it's running, doing, doing a great job and, and I see that, if, if, in looking, what I, what I've been able to see, I haven't been able to see everything because of the website, again, I think they presented what they did, uh, you've got a great setup here, I think, and, uh, I, I think somebody I can work with, uh, I'm, 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 I'm a little older than a lot of people are, but, uh, I can adapt.
So the last question, um, off the script, is, uh, pertains to infrastructure capital improvement. So, uh, within our community, we've inherited infrastructure that's about 133 years old. We've implemented a 10-phase plan to start to replace, uh, infrastructure significantly throughout the community. We're on, we're in, we're in phase seven as it, as it lies right now. And in Palacka, we are 250 people by way of census above the 10,000
Right.
Citizen threshold. Tell me a little bit about your experience with, as it relates to infrastructure improvement or one of your greatest accomplishments from an infrastructure or public work standpoint?
Well, I guess the, the biggest one I can say was I wait for a treatment. We were under, we were under a administrative order from DEP. And this was back when Congressman Allen Boyd was, was the Congressman from this area. It was about a three and a half billion dollar job and I was able to get a million five, four. Back then, it was, it was the, no, 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 the name, you can't use anymore, but the money that they got set aside that I was able to get. But if you look, I, I've gotten over eight million dollars in Chattahoochee just for most of infrastructure, housing, housing infrastructure, but most of it, right now that we're going through a two and a half billion dollar infrastructure for replacing water lines that were put in back in the forties and fifties that are just, they're nice and, and need, need to be done.
Those are new water lines to us.
Oh, yeah, but really, I'm, I'm familiar with capital improvement and, and pull down Sanat and I'm sure working with, working with your engineer or city engineer or your engineer on record, that will be, be no problem.
Any other questions from the Commission?
Do you have any, um, experience dealing with community revitalization areas like CRAs?
More, more with Main Street. I think y'all have Main.
We did have a Main Street.
At one point.
Our, our Main Street is kind of morphed and getting away from everybody last time.
I understand a lot, a lot of them have done that, but Chattahoochee is, is still going strong. We started five, five years or six years ago, Chattahoochee Main Street. I've never been in a city where we had a CRA, but I'm familiar with that and also I don't know if you've ever applied for the certified local government, but you have that. You know, there's a, there's a lot of stuff that I can help with and I'd be willing to work night and day, all I have to do is, if you're able to do it.
Any other questions? Mr. McCaskill?
No.
Thank you very much.
And, uh, you know, I have a conference start tomorrow in Orlando, so I'll ask for leave if I may, but like I told Ms. Robinson, I've got my email and, and my cell phone. If there's any questions anybody wants to ask, then I can respond back to you real well.
Yes, sir. And we definitely appreciate you, want to thank you for taking your time out to come down here.
Okay, thank you very much. And if I'm selected, I can, you know, work out something, be a person.
Yes, sir.
Nice meeting you. Nice meeting you, Ms. Garner. Y'all have a safe trip back.
And thanks for bringing your wife to Garcia's Island.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Hello.
Burden, how are you?
I'm doing well, how are you?
So, what we want you to do initially is give us a brief introduction and kind of highlight some of the, give us some of the highlights of your career thus far and tell us why you're interested in the position.
Absolutely. You know, obviously a lot of you know me. I don't know how well you know some of my background and resume, but when I was out of college, my degree is actually in business administration, minor in economics. My minor concentration is actually labor relations. So, that's the concentration that I have from my formal education. And I spent most of my time prior to 2005 in private industry, in technical distribution. I did communications largely is what that was. And in that capacity, I did sales, regional sales. I helped train and manage sales forces while I was in that capacity. In 2005, the economy kind of tanked in that area. There were no longer building schools or installing cabling, so I did a little bit of a career switch and went into a regional planning organization. And I went into that role largely as the agribusiness specialist because I have a farming background. I ran a farm operation for about 10 years after my father passed away. And my business background actually went well to being able to do that position, which really morphed over time into doing full economic development support. We supported six counties during that time during regional planning organization. So, we got involved in everything from strategic planning with smaller cities who could not afford to do strategic planning, water sewer project management, grant management. So, we did a lot of those different things for the municipalities to support them as we were going through, through the processes of that. After that, I took a directorship in Illinois. So, I was the economic development director for a county. In that role, I also did some county administration. There was no county administrator in that area, so I did a lot of assisting in budgeting and those types of things with the county. From there, I was in a engineering firm. What I did there was the community development. So, I actually sat with cities and helped them figure out how they want to pay for projects, but not also to help them with their strategic planning and how they were going to move forward with different aspects of the city. And that brings me to Platteville, Florida, largely because I got really tired of snow in the Midwest. Illinois is a very cold place to live. Never been there. They're not lying about Chicago. But I obviously, you know, I'm a retired physician as vice president of economic development for the chamber. I've enjoyed every minute of it and still enjoy every minute of it. As most of you know, I've purchased a home here, live here, love here, plan to stay here. One of the things I think that I, my interest in this, and I think I've been clear, my real interest is the end game to be the city manager, not just interim city manager. That's where I would like to be. But I think my community development background, also along with the economic development background that I have, lends well to the position the city is currently in. I think we're on the cusp of a lot of really wonderful changes and I think the couple of projects that we're seeing downtown really speak to that. I mean, with the Hotel James and with the micro brewery kind of log, I think those would be great anchors in the downtown and we'll see more growth. Small business growth is really booming right now. That's a lot of concentration that I'm working on and I think that that's going to spur some of that downtown growth as well. But I think all my experiences combined, giving management roles that I've played, economic development roles I've played, business roles that I have played, kind of culminate into a good spot to be in this position at this point in time, just with a lot of different experiences.
Okay, so we're finding ourselves in the midst of our budget season. Tell me a little bit about your financial management and budgeting experience and how would you be able to help us sustain?
I think one of the areas that I'm very good at, and I'm accused of being cheap, I tend to call myself frugal, I think going through budget processes, I think working with the department head, seeing where absolute expenses are necessary and where they're not absolutely necessary are good. One of the areas of concern that I have with our budget is actually, I know it's better than it was when I came here, is our reserves. I think I'd love to see the city reserves be able to be built more, but we're like every other city or many cities. There's always financial challenges with water lines, with vehicles that need replaced, buildings that need repaired, those types of things. But I think I'm very good at the details when it comes to looking at those budgets and trying to pull some of those all together. But I think it really is the role of city manager to help the department heads and budget manager get to the numbers that the council needs.
Describe your management style and tell us the largest organization that you've managed, the largest number of employees you've overseen.
I've overseen as 10 people, or it was 12 people when I was actually doing sales and training. I did run the regional planning office that I worked for for about eight years and I was the interim manager there for nearly a year while my manager was out with cancer. So, I've managed five, six people in that particular role there. My management style is, I wouldn't say it's a laid-back style, but I do like to be very communicative with my employees, particularly with department heads, and set out written expectations and goals for those people so that we all are on the same page and know exactly where we're going. I think, you know, those of you that have worked with me understand how I communicate and what I communicate. I think that is probably the most important aspect in managerial role is being able to do that.
What's your, what's your position? Tell us a little bit about how you embrace new technologies and use those to improve response to this.
Well, you know, I'm of that age where I guess that sometimes it gets to be a little bit of struggle to figure out a new cell phone, but I managed to get there. I think portable technology is probably the thing that's changed my job the most. When I was out in sales, we didn't really have that. Laptops were kind of a new thing. You couldn't take your information with you. I think those technologies have improved significantly to where you always have information at your fingertips, you're always available with cell phones and whatever. And I think you just adapt as you go along, just like everybody else has and like I have done. I've worked in the technology industry for several years, so I actually could terminate a fiber line if I need to. Rufus might understand that more than anybody, how difficult that can be. So, I've always been able to adapt and learn new programs. And I always like to try to take classes periodically, particularly with like Microsoft Excel, so that I'm up and current on how to use those and be the most efficient with those.
You talked a little bit about your water and sewer background. Tell us a little bit about that experience. One of the things we're looking at, you're pretty familiar, is replacing aging infrastructure within the community.
Absolutely.
Just kind of give us a little bit more insight on your water and sewer background.
I have done everything from the planning stages of water and sewer to the funding stages of water and sewer, to the implementation of the actual project, and then on the backside, the grant administration of those, including the Davis Bacon administration. I've worked with cities to set out long-term plans. I've actually worked with regional waste organizations as well, setting up those plans. And at times we had, I'll give you an example, we had a regional wastewater district in Indiana that had five homes two miles from it that were going to be condemned because they had failing septic systems. So, we set out and planned with them and worked with our legislatures to actually get the funding to actually get that done and get those plans in place and the equipment installed.
Any questions for the commission?
How do you resolve conflict?
How do I resolve conflict? I usually like to sit down face-to-face and just talk it out is how I usually like to resolve conflict. I don't shy away from that. Obviously, there's conflict everywhere at times. If you have citizens complaints, you have employee issues and problems. But I think sitting down and talking about face-to-face is the best way to do this.
Any other questions for the commission?
Answer that question, but it's just a follow-up question to that. Have you ever had to administer any disciplinary action to a supporter?
Yes, sir. I had an employee that was not meeting his timelines on grant application. We sat down, we set up a plan. I actually put together a board for him with a checklist on the wall in our conference room so that we have a visual of where he had to be and exactly at what time and what the actions and consequences were going to be for that if he did not. It's never fine, but it's something that's sometimes necessary.
I asked about that person. You have a very diverse city employees and city. How do you feel about working with us? You've got five different personalities sitting right here.
Seven.
And then you'll have staffers like that and citizens who come to you like that.
Vice Mayor, that's my job right now. I work in a very diverse group, not only work with your group, but other councils and people and citizens and corporations. Diversity, I think, is wonderful and I think diversity is the spice of life and you should use that to learn and be able to move things forward. I welcome that, that's good.
Any other questions? I have a question that no one else has asked at this point. Having no prior city manager experience, how do you, how would you address that?
Well, you know, I think you look at the role of city manager as that person is carrying out the will of the council. That's the primary role I feel of a city manager, as well as managing the day-to-day operation of the city, hopefully relying on your department heads to largely carry out their responsibilities in each of their departments. I don't think one person can manage, you know, hundreds of people. Micromanage, micromanagement is not my, my style. But I think that I do fully understand the role of city manager and I've worked with many cities to resolve problems and work through different issues and I've worked with many, many councils in the course of my career. But I think that's the most important thing, I think, is being able to work with the council, work with the employees and work with the citizens to make sure that we're providing the best service and the best place to live we possibly can.
Any other questions? Senator. Thank you very much, Mr. Burden.
Thank you all for your time.
All right, thank you. Got one last candidate? Mr. Drago, how are you, sir?
I'm fine, sir, thank you.
So, what we're going to do initially is have you give a brief introduction and overview of your career and highlight some of the successes that you've had over the years.
Well, in my public service career.
We're going to let you decide however you choose.
Okay, Reader's Digest version. I started out in the fire service, in the public service, in the fire service. I spent about 10 years in the fire service. And after that, I wanted to see how it was on the other side of the fence, I was in city management, so, the city management. And I spent the next 30-some-year years in city management, I think you have my two-page resume, it kind of lays that out from a, from a city management perspective. Now, as far as accomplishments are concerned in our profession, as long as you stay in the city, you do a good job. So, my accomplishment first would be Okeechobee, which has similar demographics to Platteville. I spent 11 years there, especially from New York, I want you to picture me in New York or Okeechobee for 11 years. That means I'm adaptable. Then after that, there was a change in commissions. I went to, to the city of Winter Springs, Ron Macklemore was the city manager. And there's a program in the state of Florida for MIT managers in transition where the managers have to pass, so Mr. Macklemore is nice enough to bring me on as his, as his assistant. I spent two years there and I went to Longwood, which is another major accomplishment because Longwood had a history of, you know, six-year period, I went for a manager a year. So, in Okeechobee and Longwood, I'm still the longest tenure manager. And Okeechobee, I did a lot of unique things because the commission was looking to change. And then after that, again, there was always a change in, you know, the composition of the city commission. Then again, Mr. Macklemore worked for the city of Daytona Beach as a public works director. Then he had somebody to take over the asset management portion. I was brought in and kind of worked my way up through the organization, served as the interim chief financial officer, interim utilities director, and then recently the business enterprise management director, which took care of all the enterprise funds for a city of 7,000 employees and $250,000 budget. And I left there because of my position, I thought others were eliminated from the budget for cost-saving purposes. The manager was always looking for money to buy things, roads or whatever.
So, you were in, you were in Longwood during the height of the development period with Alacoa and some of the other places that were there, right?
Alacoa is, was in Seminole County, was not in the city of Longwood. Longwood in the, in the past was a postal district. So, it encompassed a large area now, but the city was very small size-wise. But where it benefited the city was when the city had a 175, 185 pension plan for fire and police and the tax revenue, the insurance tax revenue was generated on the zip code. And because Longwood was a postal district, it had a large zip code, large area. And when the legislature changed its mind and said, oh, no, we're going to narrow that down to your, your corporate boundaries, they allowed Longwood to keep the revenue stream that they had already generated. So, that extra revenue stream allowed me to go in and to increase the benefits of the fire and police pension plan without costing the employee or the city more money.
So, you were engaged in, in union negotiations during that time?
Yeah. In Longwood, we had the Teamsters for the fire, for the police and then the fire, the IA event.
Describe your interest in this position.
I think the interest is, is similar to Okeechobee, I'm adaptable. And I've been to Platteville a few times and I've seen the downtown area, which I told some of your staff that I thought it had very good bones if it was, if the right schemes were developed to bring in, to bring in investors to invest in the area. But more importantly, I think, it's not only the investment part of it, but it's to make sure that their investments are protected. And you do that by how your on-plan goals and objectives are formulated and how your development codes is formulated. I believe that anybody who invests in any city, Platteville here, even the homes that you own, the city has a right to protect your investment. You have the right to accumulate wealth on your investment. So, the city shouldn't be in there establishing policies or development codes to hamper your investments. And when we talk about the CRA, you do have a CRA, okay. Where, where that's important is on the perimeter of the CRA. So as I ride around, if you have a certain development code that says in the CRA, you're gonna, the building's gonna look like this. Across the street, you will have a Butler Building that go in painted pink. That person's investment is not protected. And not only that though, but it sends a, a message to other investors that the city's not looking after the investment. Why should I invest money on the perimeter if it's not protected? That is key, because everything is a matter of perception. So you just have to be able to develop the codes in a way to entice investment, but to make sure that the investment is sustainable and is protected.
We find ourselves right in the middle of budget process. Tell me a little bit about your technique as it relates to, to budgeting and some of your experiences.
Well, unfortunately, I don't know what I could bring to the table because beginning of July, you're gonna get the taxable value from the property treasurer and you have to determine the tax rate. So I'm sure the budget's been somewhat crafted from a concept standpoint. And I could look at it, if there's some tweaking needs to be done or recommendations, I don't mind doing it. If I were to start from the beginning, again, I, I would want to get an idea from the commission on what maybe their top five priorities are and use those priorities as a way to formulate the budget. And we're gonna put aside normal expenses. So it could be priorities based on, based on, I like to see these neighborhood streets paved, I like to see this done or that done. So it's be more, more, more capital program. If there are some other programs, let's say some rec programs the commission would like to see, then that, then I would factor that into the budget also. And then, once that's done, then I would bring it back to you for look at. Now, the best way to accomplish that, I believe, is to have strategic planning sessions starting in January. And you have them, you could have them every month or you could have them every three weeks. So the first meeting would be, the staff would generate a list of certain priorities. You'd look at them and check them off, yeah, I like this priority or I don't wanna add priority. And we go back and we consolidate it and we bring it back to you and say, here's a five, here's a five that, that the majority have agreed to. Do you agree with it? Yes. And then from there, we start putting numbers to it.
Even in a temporary position, how, how do you look at a public outreach or community engagement and what methods do you employ?
Well, the best method is face to face. That's the best method. In this particular position, you have to be accessible to the public, there's no hiding. Figure cities you can hide, but cities like this, you can't hide. I worked in Okeechobee, Longwood, you know, you're, you're considered a public servant, literally. So I had no problems with that. And as a matter of fact, you get to learn a lot from the public relative to how they see the city, their perception of the city, how they see it. And what they think could, could be done to improve it, more so than me, even if I lived here all my life.
One of the other things that we've done, we just entered into a contract with a new technology firm. What's your experience or how do you embrace the utilization of new technologies to improve responsiveness or efficiencies?
When you say technology, are we talking to computers?
Computers, programs, concepts.
What you can't do is you can't introduce technology that is beyond the grasp of the employee. The technology has got to be designed so that the employees can utilize it to the maximum, to the maximum. You can introduce technology that is too sophisticated that they would take too long to learn and you know, set maintenance issues. So here, the technology you would use, basically, you're gonna use accounting software programs, you can use word software programs, the city clerk may have certain programs for her agendas and minutes. Utility billing is going to be a different program. That's even though that's gonna be, even though it's gonna be integrated to the financial system, it's still a different program that has to be adaptable to the user. And we went through that, we went through that exercise in Daytona and they couldn't make the program work. They had to scrap it, we're talking two million dollars worth, and had to bring in a different software company. You just can't make those mistakes.
Right, so explain to me, or give me some examples of your experience with urban development, development overall, economic development, and maybe one of your greatest achievements as it relates to economic development?
Well, I think I submitted a two-page economic development profile. And all those things that you read there were actually done. So let me highlight a couple that I think is important. And I'm looking at it from a developer's standpoint, which the cities don't normally look at it. Developers are willing to spend the money. If the time it takes to get through the approval process is short, it's time is money. They'll spend the money on a quality development. Now, anybody who's done project management, the first principle of project management is the more you touch it, the more expensive the project is. Well, in economic development, the more you touch the economic development project, the more expensive it is. So you can take a flow chart, your planning staff could take a flow chart, lay out exactly where the project comes in, where he goes in the process, how long it takes until it gets out to end. Now, once you do that visually, you'll see that it could literally take six, eight, ten months, literally. Now, we're not even talking going to the state on a large scale plan. So when I went to Longwood, a development project would actually go to every committee in the city. The committees would be the business development committee, the pension committee, the... Whatever committees they had, it went through it. And it just took too much time. And the code was not very user friendly. It didn't protect investment and it didn't encourage investment. So we had a community vision workshop. We brought the community in a couple of days and said, okay, we wanna change the code. We don't wanna look like other cities, we wanna look like Longwood, what say you? So they gave us a lot of valuable information. From that, we were able to craft a purpose driven code. The key is purpose driven code, purpose driven, predicated on what the public wanted. And when we went through the, when we went through the process of outlining the flow chart, the biggest impediment was duplication of regulations. In most cities, I don't think this city is gonna be any different. You're gonna have a comprehensive plan with goals and objectives. You're gonna have a future land use map. You're gonna have a land development code and you're gonna have a zoning code. So the area that's superfluous is the zoning code. So in Longwood, we eliminated zoning. So when you plump the boxes out of the flow chart and concise it, we were able to get most developments through the city in six months, in the door and out the door. The code was very comprehensive. We found ways to get around the state relative to creating districts. And we created development districts so we could target development. And in most cities, residents don't wanna see the density. So if we wanted density, we'd have to pick certain parts of the city for density to come into. So if you were a developer, would say, sir, this is what, right here? And the process is easy because we've already established the height of the building, floor area ratio and the appropriate surface. Those are the three criteria of density. So we were able to develop that. And from that, then came the, 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 the building of the apartments relative to the, to the train station. Longwood was the first city along the train station route to get it, to get a TOD. I got four hundred and nineteen thousand, four hundred and eighteen thousand dollars from John Micah to design the train station. So we had the first train station designed and built a lot different. You go on the web and you look at the Longwood train station. It's, it's not like the typical train station that DOT designed. It was historic in nature. And as, and Mr. Micah used my model when he went around the United States, touting TODs. That's the model he used. And from that, there were some other cities in Seminoles with the same model to, to success. Those probably are the two big ones. It takes time, to be honest with you, you just can't, you just can't sit down and write a code. I, I believe the residents or, I believe the citizens, that should be the citizen code. What do you want? And it's, and it sets the blueprint for future commissioners. As commission changes, the blueprint's the same unless you go back to the public and say, do you wanna make a change? Because when it comes to certain development, the public is going to be the first one that says, I like it or I don't like it. And, and if this is a representative form of government, you're supposed to somewhat adhere to the wishes of residents.
Last question from me. We've got an aging infrastructure here, about a hundred and thirty-three years old in some spots. Some of our portable water lines are back to the eighteen eighty-six. Give us some of your experience as it relates to infrastructure replacement and other works.
Well, a large portion of my utilities experience recently was with the city of Daytona Beach. I served as interim utilities director. And we had two, we had two wastewater plants, a water plant. We had, we had pipes that are probably just as old as what you have here. We were able to get ten million dollar worth of grants from DDP, the Water Management District, to cover the costs of projects, something in seventeen point seven million. So I think that's a pretty good ratio. The Water Management District is willing to give you the money if they can see it benefits them. Reuse lines is one that they're, that they're interested in. I, I wasn't able to pull up your cup to find out what requirements you have relative to amount of, of reuse water you need to discharge. But all cups have that. So that would be the first thing I have to look at. So one of the plants, I mean, we, we recently signed a contract for forty-two million dollars to upgrade the Art and Phil Five system, RAS, RAS, and put in deep bed filters. We use UV as a disinfectant for the water. And because the UV system was so old, every Wednesday, the UV system would be taken out for maintenance. And then the reuse water then had to be pumped back to the river. So, and we had a permit to do that. So we were in the process of getting a new, a new UV system so we wouldn't have to take the UV out of service. We were also able to get grant money from DDP and Water Management District to discharge six million gallons of reuse water into what was known as Bennett Swamp. It's a recharge area, that's where our wells were. So they funded that almost a hundred percent because that's important. If you have wells, they're gonna be looking, the Water Management District, they're gonna be looking to how are you gonna recharge that aquifer? If you take your water out of the river, which might work in Okeechobee, we took it out of Lake Okeechobee. And that's the challenge. Every day, that raw water had a different chemical composition. So it had to be treated chemically, every day was different.
Any questions for the commissioners?
Mr. Drago, what do you see yourself in the next five years?
Probably doing a combination of interim work. I enjoy doing this work and being able to play golf when I want to. Oh, by the way, I'm glad you brought that up there. Some of my specific experience lies with, lies, lies with golf courses.
I said, man.
Okay. And cemeteries, Longwood had a cemetery, I managed that. Also in Longwood, we went through two hurricanes in two thousand and four and within four days, the city was totally cleaned up. And Longwood was the only city in Seminole County that received a hundred percent reimbursement from FEMA both times.
Were you there when they did Westwood Hole? The, the grants that they got for Westwood Hole in Lake Okeechobee?
No, ma'am.
Any other questions for the commissioners?
I, I would ask this question. We are a very diverse community and it is important for the person who works for us to be able to work with everybody. I said, we've got five different personalities sitting here. Do you have any trouble in working with the diversity of this community and of us?
I don't see any. Any other questions? Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, sir.
We definitely appreciate it.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And we'll talk more about your handicap.
Okay.
You know, we got a golf course out there, Donald Ross Golf Course?
Yes, I know.
Drop by for your ladies.
And do you have a cast?
I used to get your money, but I didn't know you played golf. You might need to help them. I got one of these shirts on me.
Oh, wow.
I gave it to you.
It's in.
Okay, at this point, we've gone through all the interviews, all the candidates. And what is the pleasure of the commission? Do you wanna take a moment to deliberate, to calculate, or do you wanna make a decision today?
First question.
I would like to hear from Mrs. Hickam.
Yeah, yes.
She, she, she. I would, I would like to hear from... If you don't mind, I think you were pretty attentive and you kind of was...
Oh, my gosh.
You know. Whatever, whatever you can offer us from the candidates that you heard from today, and it's, it'll be up to us to maybe make the final decision, but I wanna hear from her. I need to take a recess though, 'cause I just had a little...
Let's stand a recess for five minutes. At this point, what is the pleasure of the commission?
Go ahead.
I have two things that I would like to say. Before the intermission, I was all privy to having Miss Hickam up and come up. But I think at this moment, I don't think it would be the appropriate thing to do, being that whoever we decide she would have to work with. So that would kind of be a...
Yes.
Funky situation to be a part of and...
The lack of an other adjective.
Say that again.
The lack of a bit more adjective.
And then, second, just after sitting here and thinking about what we've listened to, I don't feel comfortable with making the decision tonight. And I would put that in the form of a motion.
And I second that.
Well, so I bet. So we got a motion for it, the second, as we get ready for discussion. My question is, since your next step, first one, what's the next step? To who? The next step, if you're not gonna make it tonight, when are you gonna make it?
I don't know, we definitely, I heard some stuff that it just shouldn't be...
I'd just rather, if we're having our one-on-one meetings with Miss Hickam, I'll have them on Friday. I guess we need to kind of, after we have those meetings, if everyone's gonna meet for us, to go ahead and decide a new, schedule a meeting to meet after that and make our decision from there. So let's look at...
A week.
We'll say we're meeting with her on Friday.
A week from Friday, a week from that Friday.
And our next, what's our next commission?
I'm gonna make that more...
The commission meeting. Do you think we have one?
And I have more concerns, I think, just some additional things for me to put out there. And I'm not sure if anybody's feeling the way that I feel. And I think this is the proper form of doing it. If we, I mean, bring somebody else, definitely.
You need acceptance. That's what you get for...
So you wanna vet?
As much as we want to...
You want to vet the process?
We want to truly vet the process because I've heard some things tonight and then I have some concerns if we bring certain people on, if not all three. Some of, are gonna take a little bit more extensive training. And that, I don't think we need to put ourselves in a position right now, let's take it, let's vet it out, 'cause we need a, we need a more vetted out process. 'Cause right now, from what I heard tonight, I'm...
Well, that's something that we can consider. Well, that's something that we can consider individually as commissioners and come back and burn to the table.
Okay. Ms. Triggers, Ms. Robinson, we're going to ruin everybody's Fourth of July and try to come back with something around. Ms. Triggers is saying the second or third of July.
Second or third.
So, what we're going to...
Like you said, it makes me...
Tuesday, Wednesday.
What we're going to do is, let's do this. Before we get into all of that, let's have two of you guys find a date that's appropriate.
Ms. Hickman was asking Friday at 3:00. Would everybody be available since you're already available?
You're going to meet individually or in a workshop?
After all the individual meetings, 3 o'clock on Friday. Everybody comes back together.
For a decision?
Yes.
Is that amenable? Yay, nay, maybe so?
Come back with a decision on...
What we're saying, have a meeting and then...
On the interim. Is that enough? Is that enough time for you?
No, I would think...
Friday's enough time for everybody?
It's too short for me.
Well, you need August, July?
But after we meet with her and then we come back and have a special call meeting on Friday, I mean, that'd give us some time from now, which is what, Tuesday until Friday?
Today's Tuesday?
Tuesday until Friday. Because we were ready to make a...
Because we're not bringing...
Decision tonight, right?
Uh, nope. We're not bringing additional people to the table. We're just...
Okay. So, let's use the democratic process. We've got a motion on the floor in a second. Is your motion to bring it back on Friday?
We have a...
I guess.
Did you vote on postponed minutes?
My motion is that we not make a decision tonight, that we table this. We have our one-on-ones, and at Friday at 3:00 that we reconvene.
Motion on the floor in a second. Motion on the floor in a second. Any further discussion? We know the commission of board wants more time. Seeing no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. I give up. So, that's the... So, that's the... I'm confused, but that's the last. I don't think it's... Then we have any reports?
We have a report.
We have a report? All right. So, we've got one report. And our report is... And so, for our report, this is the report that we have in place, and we need commission approval to move forward at this time. The report is, "We will be reallocating dollars in the existing budget to facilitate a reorganization. Special events and recreation will now be housed along with PEL at the Palacka Police Department. As a result, there would be additional organizations to maximize efficiencies under public works. Grant administration will take place on an additional... Grant administration will take on additional grant accounting and coordination with finance to ensure compliance with the new processes as a result of the prior audit. Two employees will be onboarded in order to facilitate community outreach, fundraising, recreational programming, and special events."
While we're going to this, before we have our regular...
I have a question. I just have a question. Do we have to take this as an emergency item?
It's not. It's already on the agenda. And so, basically what it is, is we are... We're consolidating Recreation and Cultural Resources together, Cultural Arts and Resources together, sending that over to the police department so that all those programs are basically up under the same branch. And there's a layer of supervision that goes into there. And then, on the other side, we're taking the grant administrator and so that we can deal with some of the concerns that we had that relates to the audit, to be able to have the grant administrator deal with accounting through report and coordinate with finance. So, we'll have those things taken care of from a budget standpoint. It's of minimal impact to the budget because we were able to use unused resources, and it's all general fund for the purposes of the capital outlay to get us to where we need to be. And what it allows you to do is have cultural resources, the staff that comes up on the cultural resources, also our recreation program administrator, as well as creating a new director position, which will allow us to be able to meet the needs of all the citizens who are outside of the preferred districts and community overall, and deal with all these things in one place and have this in place. And the only thing that... So, we technically don't need a vote because this budget transfers, but it's all... And it's all within the general fund. But we brought this to the commission so that we would have commission approval.
I want to think about it a little bit, man.
What are you thinking about?
In the budget workshop, it'll be for them that I can... Okay. I need to know.
I want to... Take your thing with the police department.
The police department wants it.
Do they have enough staffing level?
But aren't you...
It increases the staffing and it meets their basic needs and deficits. So, chief actually wants it. Chief wants it. Finance wants it. Public Works wants it.
And my ultimate concern was that Ms. Tucker is taking on additional duties in lieu of past these going...
Right. So, everybody... So, all three departments wants it from the administrative side. Ms. Triggers is in agreement with it as well. And so...
Can you put it on our agenda for the next meeting?
It'll be in your budget workshop.
Okay. I want to think about it a little bit. I think that's a whole lot for us to be putting with chief to be talking about.
But they're creating positions. They're creating... We're disrupting.
I'll just have to talk to you afterwards.
All right. I need to talk to y'all before I do that. I'm sorry. I don't know about nobody else, but I need to talk to those people that are involved in the budget.
Chief, on the floor, talk to him. Come on.
Yeah.
I want to talk to him by myself.
That's fine. He can come up. As a matter of fact, put it at the PD was his idea. So, I'll let him tell you.
Yeah, he need to talk. When you have stuff like this, chief, before we come up here to sit, I like to think about some of that stuff a little bit. I may have some other stuff that I could add to it or tell you no one.
Chief, yes, ma'am. As for the portion of the changes, we've been doing PEL and recreation in the community for a number of years. We just looked at it as not reinventing the wheel and finding a better way for PEL and recreation underneath the city to combine and provide better products to the community. And doing it, it's just something that we are all doing the same thing. And most of the kids that'll be affected is the same kids. To be able to come together and work together is what we wanted to do anyway. So, we thought it'd be a better product, be able to present to the community. We are already heavily involved with our special details and our special events. So, we're involved in the planning process and attending the meetings with that as well already. Most of the events have to come through the police department anyway, with approval of road closures, noise variances, things of that nature. So, that actually falls under us as well. It's an easy transfer. And then, the cultural arts and our community investments and things like that, wanting to be involved in the community, it falls under our plan. Our plan is basically, together we are stronger, and together we can make a difference. So, being able to provide, bringing new staff to be able to provide these different phases, not only to the city, to the police department, and to the community, it's just a win situation for us. So, for me, it wasn't a hard decision or anything like that to be able to put back. Also, the crime analysis portion. Crime analysis, so I'm sorry. Yes, as well, was one person not being able to address crime analysis is a big force.
And this is community development. This is important in order to be able to develop these programs in the community. And this is going to be more than just recreation. This is going to focus on many things.
In the annex. We just turned annex. We see an opportunity. So, one of the things that we see out of this is an opportunity to house the program inside of the annex by being able to get rid of the portions of the annex that are used as storage to find a new home for those things. It allows for that facility to take on a greater use. One of the things the chief wants to see that facility being used for programing, after-school program, and some of the other things, there's some great opportunities. Never involved with that, to create partnerships with people like Century 21 and some of the other organizations. But the big piece of it is, inside the city of Palacka, one of the reasons is, we have programs that are... We program downtown. We've got cultural resources individuals that are set to program downtown. We've got recreation programs that are set for seniors and set for youth. But we've never had within the city in itself, a person who is programmed to deal with the rest of the community that doesn't fall within special districts. And so, it gives you an opportunity to deal with your 18 to 25, your endangered community as a whole, to deal with seniors, to deal with everyone who lives in outlying areas, to create development programs, to work in conjunction with other organizations within the community, facilitating partnerships, doing workforce innovation and projects of that nature as well as crime prevention. The crime analysis portion allows us to be able to have an individual in place who can look at crime stats and be qualified and trained by the police department and FDLE to come in and to look at those stats, to be able to provide, from that point, additional resources and additional opportunities for us to deal specifically with all the issues that come as a result of the statistics that are put in place. What that does, in short term, is it stops us from just concentrating on people. Stops us from concentrating just on projects, and we start to deal with people. One of the other things that that person would be in charge of is looking at projects such as the Business Incubator and seeing where there's an opportunity for us to move forward with projects of that nature and how we can use workforce innovated strategies to deal with that. But since Ms. Brown wants to wait, we won't even talk about that part.
Frank, you want to get all your questions answered?
No. What time? I'm coming tomorrow. I got to go home at 2:00 in the morning and then to pick up on me. And I'll be there to talk to you tomorrow.
2:01, I'll be thinking about a special meeting. Have your questions answered?
I have a... You're speaking event tomorrow.
Well, just give me your time.
She said 2:00 in the morning.
I'll be... I want him home with his wife then. He got to keep a wife.
So, again, thank you, chief, for giving us the information. Any questions, commission of board?
Yeah, I was just thinking about the positions. You said two positions will be moved over to cultural... I mean, under chief from the cultural resource.
Three? Wow. So, three more positions?
Is it how many new... How many new or how many...
It's not three new positions, but cultural arts will be moved up underneath this department, which is a division under the police department. It's just going to be another police department division that's going to expand and make better what they're doing.
Two program coordinators and a director. We're basically reclassifying positions. And then, on the other side, we'll take informant from... Take a informant from rec, and we'll move over into a similar capacity under public works where you still... And so, the mowing would basically transfer to that portion. And also, your grants coordinator would just take on the additional roles since they don't have the supervisory role.
And would they have... Would there be an increase in pay for some of these positions?
For director stuff.
Yeah. The pay pretty much stays the same. There's only creation of one position, and it's in concert with what we have in place thus far. And actually, being able to take and being able to take the roles and combine them together to do the public information, to do all of them, you know, do all of the information to the community, allows us to be able to take stuff that we've already budgeted to do it. And that's why it's only considered a budget transfer as opposed to anything else. So, the budget impact, again, is minimal based upon what you got in place, and you create the additional positions, and you deal with all the deficits that we have as it relates to operation. So, it's simply a stream of efficiencies within operation, which allow us to get from a point where we have deficits as it relates to public information, we have deficits as it relates to crime analysis, we have deficits as it relates to coordination of community projects and programming, and all that stuff is under one place, under supervision, and it allows public works to deal with public works aspects. It allows us to deal with all the auditing issues, and we move the community forward. It's not anything major overall, but it is what it is.
All right. We can't vote because Ms. Mary got...
You can.
No, y'all can vote. Y'all can vote. I'll just go sit down and talk to them.
Well, you say it wasn't necessary to vote anyway because it's just... Okay, so we're just...
I just would like...
But we want you guys to know what's happening.
I was trying to understand.
It's exciting. Well, I mean, it's exciting.
What y'all need to understand is, for a long time, we've been looking for stuff to bring us together. And I found PEL back in the day when Chief Sees was here and brought it. It started back in those days because it was a good thing for this community. I want to see all the good things we can do in this community. But I want to understand, we're putting a whole lot of stuff under the police department where we weren't... One time was going to just find him enough police officers. And I know he's getting... He's getting some... He done a whole lot of stuff to make sure he had enough police officers, enough cars.
One thing I will say, Ms. Mary, is this doesn't take away from the police stuff, but it does free us up a little bit because from where we were actually doing a lot for free for volunteer work, we actually now have staff to assist us. So, we pay staff to help us out.
Well, just call me and I'll come to your office.
She want to talk to you.
It's right.
I need to... If you keep them busy doing programs and recreation, they're off the street. But let her talk to the chief.
I said I want to talk to the chief.
Y'all want to talk to the chief, y'all. We understand. If we want to...
Chief, this doesn't require a vote. Thank you, chief. Yes, sir. Everybody ain't got a memo, this doesn't require a vote. Next up, commission of board.
I have nothing to add. I have... Next up, what?